I want to call the regular meeting to order agenda item number one. And I'm calling for regular meeting agenda item number two, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to rest this idea.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. We ask that we rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your, all your blessings. As October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we come to you today as, and ask for your healing touch for all cancer patients. We also ask to continue healing everyone that has been affected by COVID. May you surround them with peace and hope. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Now I'll call for regular meeting agenda item number three. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor, ma'am.
Mayor Council, good afternoon. I believe we have Mr. Arnaldo Mata from the Leadership Resource Group. He's going to join us via Zoom. He is the one who has requested this proclamation. Where the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that causes difficulties with reading, writing, spelling, and word pronunciation. Whereas dyslexia is distinguished from other learning disabilities by its weakness at the phonological level and that it is neurobiological in origin. Whereas the city of Mission's most precious resources is its children and dyslexia affects one in five in the United States, or 20% of our population. Whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies in each individual. Whereas because it takes individuals with dyslexia longer to process phomatic information and disability directly affects academic growth, achievement, and self-esteem. Whereas dyslexia is an unexpected disability in an individual who is of average to above-average intelligence. Whereas dyslexia can lead to a lifetime struggle for personal and economic success. Whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month is an opportunity to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescent students and adults with dyslexia. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby recognize October 2020 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in the City of Mission and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens, proclaimed on this the 12th day of October 2020.
I am ready to entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
We are motioning a second to accept this proclamation as presented by Ms. Carrillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those close, same sign. Motion carries 5-0, and here's the proclamation, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, I will get it to Mr. Mata. I don't know if Mr. Mata is on Zoom, if he has, would like to say a few words.
Mr. Mata, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate the time and effort that you guys have put into this. This is a serious issue that unfortunately many parents are unaware of, that their children are suffering from this problem, and your actions today go a long way toward helping us promote the, the concept and make parents more aware of that. So I express my sincere appreciation for your efforts in this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mata.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mata, could you get with Ms. Anna and get my phone number and give me a call? I'd like to get more involved. My daughter also has dyslexia.
Oh, certainly. I will. I will. Thank you.
Any other question by any of the council? Okay, call for a regular meeting agenda item number four. Ms. Lombrea, you have the floor, or you have the electronic screen.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, Council members. Good afternoon. We continue to urge residents to complete their census because of its importance for future funding for, for social services programs, housing, healthcare, roads, and police and fire protection. It's easy and safe. Complete the census by phone, mail, or online at twentytwentycensus.gov. Just to report, Mayor, the drive-through events are being coordinated to allow census takers to assist our residents. Local businesses have allowed census takers and staff to set up drive-through events in the next few weeks. Businesses participating include Aguilar's Meat Market, Foye Supermarket, Walmart, Home Depot, and Tractor Supply. We also plan to blockwalk in several low-response areas such as Bonito Subdivision, Toner Subdivision, Madero, and Melba Carter. There will be plenty of incentives for those completing the census to help us reach our goal. And as of October the 8th, Mission is at 56.6%, Mayor. I don't know if you have any questions.
No, but I do want to report that on Saturday morning, I went to go eat breakfast at La Doña and on West Mission, and there was a family there that wanted for me to deliver a message to our staff, you know, on the, on the certificate that they had received for doing the census. But they were very appreciative. They had never been to La Doña before, and they were very appreciative that they had the opportunity to come to a city restaurant in Mission.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll continue that.
Hold on. The council, you have the floor.
When is the deadline? Did it, the 31st of October?
It got extended.
Okay.
Yes, through the end of the month, yes.
Good, good.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that's something that we need to let everybody know because we had said that it was September, right? The deadline, so it's not too late. We can still count people until the 31st of October. Okay.
If you mind, all of us that are here and all of us that are on Zoom, if you can go check with your neighbors to ensure that, that your neighbors have, have done their, their census. If not, just quickly remind them that it's very easy, very quick, you know, by phone, by computer, or, or just to give a, the city, the city phone number that we have posted on, on our website, and, and we'll send a, we'll send somebody out there to, to conduct the census with them. It doesn't take very long. I've been on, on some of the events, and, and I've seen up to 70 people being processed in, in, in 90-minute periods, you know, so it's, it's great.
Mayor, I too want to thank all our staff that have, have done everything they possibly can to raise the number. Although 56.6% is awesome, 10 years ago, we're at 61%, and so I really wish we would have 100%, but even if we beat 10 years ago, it'd be really nice. So I invite everybody to ask their friends and family to sign up for the census because it is really important. Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Lombrea, anything, any final notes, Ms. Lombrea?
I would just like to add the phone number, Mayor. It's 1-844-330-2020. And also, they can call the Spear Memorial Library at 585-8670.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, 8770.
I guess if we can get it on, on our website and, and post it, you know, as, as many places that we can, that are available inside the city, I think that that would help also tremendously, you know? Again, thank you, staff. Thank you, not only the staff, but the Census Department also. But I think they jointly have been working collaboratively with, with the city staff, especially like the Boys and Girls Club and their, their staff and their, and their interim director. Also, and any other staff member that has, and so, and even staff members that have, they're bringing their sons and daughters to assist, you know, we thank them also. You know, just because they're your son and daughters, you know, from the office of the mayor and the council, we want to make sure that they get thanked, al- also because they're, they're out there, they're out there, and when you have a lot of help, it's a lot easier to conduct your business. So thank you very much, Ms. Lombrea, and all the staff, and Aida Lermont also on it, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Without further ado, I'm going to call regular meeting agenda number five. Ms. Enriquez, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and I will just go ahead and, and let you all know that we will be advertising that census has been extended for October 31st and also on our social media platforms. So in continuation, I just want to remind everyone, our community, our business community, that on the 29th of October, we will be hosting our virtual annual GMCC awards together in partnership with the Progress Time Citizen Awards. We did call for nominations, so right now we're accepting nominations. Nominations can be done online. And win by anybody who wants to nominate for any of our awards. And they can do so at our office, and we can send them the link, but we're going to go ahead and share this also on social media. But to remind everybody, the awards that we're going to be commending people for is the Business of the Year Award, the Business Leader of the Year Award, Community Impact Award, and then, of course, the Citizens Awards for Progress Time. So there's still time to nominate. The deadline to nominate will be this Wednesday, October 14th by 5:00 p.m., so we will send another reminder tomorrow. And we do have a couple of educational webinars coming up. We have one this Wednesday, and that will be Operations Management. It is co-hosted with the Small Business Development Center, so if anybody wants to join us for that one, should be a good one. And next Tuesday, we do have a Cybersecurity Awareness webinar, and those, of course, are open to our membership and our, and our, and our business leaders. And that's all I have today, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any questions by the council? Questions? No questions. Again, thank you, Ms. Enriquez, and I'll call for regular meeting agenda item number six, and I'm going to ask Mr. Silva. Do, do you have the floor, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Today, I'd like to report that we've approved 283 applications for a total amount of 936,500. We've given out 896,500 in checks, and this week, the Finance Department will be cutting an additional $37,000 in checks. Now, we have a couple of stragglers that we've been able to, we've been reaching out to them. They've been giving us some documentation, so we have about 15 more that we're working with to wrap this up.
Any questions? No questions? Again, thank you very much for stepping up to the plate on, on this, you know, and helping our businesses and kicking them back alive to, to function. I mean, COVID-19 is not over, but, but at least those funds will actively go into our, our economy and mission, and I just want to thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, staff, also. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, Mr. Perez and, and council, this is the departmental reports. You have a, you want to ask any questions on the reports that are filed, this is the time.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those close, same sign. Motion carries and departmental reports are approved as, as presented in writing, 5-0. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, citizens' participation. And Ms. Carrillo, is there anybody that has filed or raised their, their hands and that they want to speak?
Um, Mayor, nobody signed up for the, we have a vote that's right online.
Well, last one's Charlie. Charlie, give us, and Alex, let us know. Is there anybody there? We, we don't see nobody on citizens' participation. Okay. Thank you very much. In that, in that case, I will close citizens' participation and go to the regular meeting agenda item 1.0, which is our public hearings, and I'm going to call for 1.1A, and I'm going to ask Ms. Luna, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a rezoning for a tract of land, lot 9 and 10, Block 195, O'Blade Edition. It's from single-family residential to R3 multifamily. The applicant is Quepo's Family Limited Partnership. If the council is inclined to approve, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest, I'm sorry, on the southwest corner of Mayberry Road and East 13th Street, along the south side of East 13th Street. Surrounding zones include R1 to the northwest and south, and R2 to the east. Existing land uses, single-family residential to the northwest and south, and Spear Memorial Library to the east. The site currently has some existing apartments. The future land use map shows a low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. In October 2006, the City Council did a mass rezoning for the area, and the line of demarcation between residential and apartments is Mayberry Road. The applicant can remodel the existing apartments but won't be able to tear down and reconstruct unless a rezoning is approved. Staff feels that surrounding the area with a duplex would have a detrimental effect on the area that has long been for a single-family residential. Changing the zone to R3 would also be considered spot zoning since there's no other apartments other than those in that area. This is a public hearing. Staff and PNC recommending deinenio. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
Mayor Caña, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name's Miguel Del Angel. I am with Quepo's Family Limited Partnership. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you and your council members for, for this, your consideration in this matter. I was born in Mission, or my whole family lives in Mission, and we would just like the opportunity to keep investing in Mission to make it beautiful. We are the owners of that, that apartment and would like just to bring it up to date and, you know, and keep, keep Mission beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Ms. Carrillo, I'm asking if you have anybody indicating electronically, or Mr. Charlie? And Alex, do you have anybody electronically asking to do, participate in this public hearing? We have no. Therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to give the opportunity for the council to, to, to open for discussion, council.
I just want to be clear. So the property owner would have the opportunity to remodel?
Remodel, but not tear down and reconstruct.
Not tear down and start over?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, they, they have that opportunity.
Yes.
How many units are there right now?
Currently, there are eight.
Eight? Okay.
Any other question? My question is, if we, if we deny it as the recommendation by the staff and public and zoning, what is it that going to stay there?
It, he can continue with his apartments. He can continue with what he has. He could not just tear completely down and reconstruct. But he would be able to remodel what he currently has because it was already there.
And if, if there's rezoning occurs, then he can tear down?
Then, then he can tear down and rebuild.
And beautify the, the lot and beautify the, the surrounding area there within his jurisdiction?
He would be able to do something brand new. If you, if the rezoning is approved.
Right now, there are current eight apartments.
Eight units right now?
I'm sorry?
So there's eight units there right now?
Currently, there's eight units, and he said he wants to beautify the area. He can, he can. He would be able to remodel what's existing already because it's already there, prior to the rezoning.
I think it's kind of like...
It's the only one there that's...
I mean, do we want to continue with, with an old building, or do we want to?
Yes.
It's just like, but isn't that part of the... Go ahead.
If I may, I'm sorry. So we, I don't know if you're familiar with Highland Park. We took some old dilapidated, an old, very old dilapidated building on that street and, and made it nice. And while we were doing it, I mean, all the neighbors came by, thanked us just for bringing it up to, you know, to par. And I noticed an effect, you know, besides them coming to, to thank us and kind of congratulate us on everything, they started remodeling down Elm Street. And I saw roofs being done. I saw landscaping being done, and I think it's just a trickle effect for the whole community.
Yeah, I saw what he did with those apartments. I mean, it's, I mean, that's what I would like to, I'd rather him build something nice and instead of keeping there, but is the, that's, is that particular site part of the new ordinance that we approved? That they're part within that?
I think, I think, I think the basic thing behind the whole thing of, for independent staff and planning and zoning is that the current zoning is R1, and yet there's an eight apartment complex in the R1 zone. You know, and, and staff has already been instructed by us not to do selective zoning. And, and, and this would be a selective zoning in the area, but, but with, but I'm with you as far as what do you want? You want the results the way they, they are, or do you want to afford him the opportunity to, to beautify the area, which is what we've been wanting to do is beautify Mission in general and upgraded it? So I don't know, Ms. Garza and Mr. Rida, or Ms. Ortega?
Did he show something to the planning and zoning as far as what their plan is?
No, not yet.
And what is his request?
He should, well, he, he would want to, right now, he says to remodel, but he would like to add more.
Please, please identify yourself for the records or...
Miguel Del Angel.
Miguel Del Angel, okay.
Yes. We, we, we currently also, our, our, our plan for that, we have a, a tract of land on 11th Street, right across from the Vantage Bank. So we're going to do something there, and we kind of wanted to tie it in with this property and kind of make them similar in styles, and just to make that, you know, make that little track nice. I mean, from, from having some apartments there that are already apartments and just be doing the inside to doing the whole property and actually making it nice, I mean, it's just...
And, and you're making, it's a, it's a... You're making that commitment to the city right now, sir? That you, that you will make it a better place?
Yes, sir. We live, we live in Mission. We like investing in our, in our city, and we want to keep our money here.
To Rida?
I have a question.
Let Mr. Rida, the...
Well, I mean, if they're going to upgrade it, I have no problem, but I don't know exactly if it's...
I'd like to see a plan.
We would be, we would be more, we have not started on plans there because we were met with a lot, I guess, in the, the zoning committee. So we kind of halted everything because they just, I mean, they wouldn't even really just hear me out on what we wanted to do. I brought it up to their attention, but if, if we were to get our zoning, we would be more than happy to drop the plans and, and pass them through Alex and, and make sure that they're up to your, your standards.
Okay.
So the, it's on two lots, right? Lot 9 and 10?
Yes.
And there's your, your typical 50 by 150? So we have a 100 by 150 as the property?
So it's almost a half a acre.
And so right now, that, that, that building is, it's a two-story, right?
Yes, it's a two-story.
And I guess there's four units on the bottom and four units on the top, right?
Yes.
So with 100 by 150, what would, what's the maximum number of units that they could put in?
Taking the parking into consideration on that.
Because they would have to, you know, comply with the parking ordinances.
We would, we would comply with the parking. We would comply with the landscaping, making the landscaping nice. I don't think we can fit more than 10 or 12 units on, on that lot. But I mean, we would have the parking. We would have the lands, full landscaping and just...
The max, 10?
Yeah.
10.
10 units?
10, yeah.
It seems like the, the math says that 10 units will be the max. However, you do, later on, you, if it does get approved or disapproved, then you need an engineer to, and a something to, to give you the exact, exact amount.
Yeah, but I mean, just bring more lighting, more landscaping, and just make, you know, because, I mean, right now, it's, it's kind of the eyesore of the neighborhood, and to the south of us, we have a beautiful home, and I'm sure, like, he doesn't like being butt-up, you know, against us. I mean, if he were to have something nice back there, I think, you know, in my opinion, it would be better for everyone.
Let, let the council, let, let, let's hear from the council, sir, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Del Angel, so currently, right now, you all have eight tenants there.
We have five tenants there.
So three are vacant.
Three are vacant.
And the, most of those tenants have lived there for a while?
I think the longest tenant I've had there has lived there for, well, yeah, I have had one since the five years that we've owned that property.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Garza, you have the floor.
Yeah. I'm probably going to overshare right now, but I'm familiar with these apartments. Oscar used to live there before we were married.
That's why you...
Sentimental.
It's kind of sentimental, yeah.
So, so you know what kind of shape they are on the inside?
Well, this was 40 years ago.
So they were nice. They were nice back then.
Yes, they were. They had the real pretty wood floors. So anyway, my question is, um, uh, so, and it's really to Suzie. Suzie, in, in the...
so, and it's really to Suzie. Suzie, in, in the building permit process, would, he would have to follow the parking?
He would, he would need to comply with the parking, landscaping?
Landscaping, lighting?
Everything.
Water retention?
Everything. If he, yes. Whether he, whether he remodels, or he does new, he would still need to comply with the building.
So, so my, my, the, what I'm trying to say is that all of those items, parking, lighting, and landscaping, can be addressed in the, in the building permit?
In the, in the building permit stage.
Not only in the reconstruction of the building.
Yes.
So right now, he has eight units, and...
That he could modify and beautify if he wants to, with the current zone that he has.
But it will be beneficial for him to add two more units, but also to us as a city,
to beautify the area, to...
Let me ask you, sir. Do you have, is your plan to knock it down and reconstruct a new facility?
That's what we would like to do.
Okay, so that's your plan? Not to remodel and add to what you have, right?
It, it's, it would be knocked down and beautified.
Okay.
And tie it, and tie it into our other property on 11th Street, that we have not started on yet.
So can we recommend that, so we would need to table this, and/or?
I would say, I would say let's do the rezoning and zoning.
You could either take no action on it, or table?
But he's not going to invest unless he gets the zoning.
Right now, the request is to approve the...
Just the zoning.
But what was the take on, I'm sorry, mayor, what was the take on planning and zoning, when they listened to everything that we're listening to?
That he could still be able to remodel what he wants and beautify with the current zoning that it currently has, without having to change the zone?
But not demolish and reconstruct.
But not demolish and reconstruct.
Yeah, he wants to demolish and reconstruct, and since they're over 40 years old, I mean...
It needs, it needs new plumbing, it needs new electrical. I mean, it, it, it needs, it needs it all. And we would rather just start...
Sir, allow the council to be able to address this, sir, and...
I'm sorry.
The public part, the public hearing, unless the council member has a, has a question directly to you, sir, please allow the council to do, to take care of the business that we need on hand.
I, I apologize, mayor. Sorry.
Not a problem, sir. But thank you for your cooperation.
So right now, what we have on the agenda is to approve the rezoning from an R1 to an R3.
That's it.
That is correct.
And then, once, once we do that, then he'll come up with his plan.
He'd say they're to approve.
And then he has the stipulations, he has to follow the planning process for a new, a new building?
Yes, sir. If you vote four out of five for rezoning, all the amenities can be handled during the term.
Yeah, four out of five, or five out of, five zero, either way.
I would like to make a motion. I know people will probably be upset about this, but I'm basing it on this particular case. I think it's something that is gonna be beneficial to our concern. I would like to move that we approve the rezoning from an R1 to an R3.
And chair will recognize your motion, Mr. Plata. So I will ask for a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I'll open it for discussion, final discussion by any of the council members, any question by the council members. Keep in mind that we do need, because the, the planning and zoning and staff are recommending denial, the vote has to be four, four, four one, or five zero in favor of the motion. Otherwise, the motion dies and, and the denial stands, just for the record, you know.
Mayor, if you're gonna allow one more comment, can I say something?
Right now, we have the floor for discussion by the council. You have the, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just wanna reiterate that, that, that the owner of the property can remodel, and can make it a beautiful building, can do the landscaping, the lighting, and everything that's required to make it a beautiful building, without rezoning. My, my concern with rezoning is that, once we do that, then you're gonna have, you're, you may have other people wanting to do the same thing in that area, and that's gonna saturate that area with R3 zoning. So if we start with this one, it, it could cause a trickle effect.
But how many other apartments are there with eight, eight units in the area?
I'm not saying that right now there is, but people can do the same thing. They could knock down their house, they can build multi-units and say, well, there's an R3 right next to me, so I can do that. So, I, I'm just saying, he can do everything that he's saying he's gonna do with the, with the...
Except demolishing. He can't demolish.
Oh, he can't demolish, but he, but it's, it's a good building. It needs to be redone on the inside, probably. I mean, we've done that before, where we go into, oh, yeah, my house on, my little office on Sherwood Road, that's what I did. I didn't demolish it, but I tore down all the walls, did the repl, did the plumbing, did the electrical, did everything else to it. So that's, that's...
That's your take?
That's my, my last comment, yes.
And any other council member? Okay. I'm gonna call for a vote, and I wanna make it clear that you're voting to reverse the denial, okay? A, 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 a yay for, for this is that you're going to reverse the denial by the planning and zoning, and allow the, the R3 zoning, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I need, I will go to hand vote because of the, of the, of the nature of the, of the reversal, so... Three, all those again, same sign? Even though it's three to two, sir, the, the motion does not allow for, for R3 zoning, therefore, the motion, the, the R3 zoning application is denied as, in accordance to the planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connehan, council members. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Now, I'll call for 1.1B.
1.1B, the mayor and council is a rezoning of a 6.790 acres out of lot 16-6 West Addition to Sherland. It's currently agricultural, open interim, and they're proposing light industrial I-1. The developer is Omar Development. The council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located approximately 1,200 feet west of Conway Boulevard, along the south side of Expressway 83 Frontage. The irregular lot has frontage to both US Expressway 83 Frontage and Abelino Farias. Surrounding zones include C3 to the north, C4 to the east, agricultural and agricultural open interim to the west and south. Existing land uses, it's a commercial to the north, it's vacant to the east, and commercial to the west and south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map reflects a general commercial, although the future land use map shows a general commercial designation. The applicant plans to use this site as a warehouse and a steel recycling center, which is permissible in a C4 commercial designation, and perhaps a better neighbor for this area. Staff mail notices to property owners within 200 feet of the radius to solicit comments in favor against the request. As of this date, staff has not received any comments. Staff recommends denial of the I-1 light industrial and approval of a C4, which is heavy commercial. Staff and PNC recommended denial of the I-1 and approval of the C4. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Ms. Carrillo, I'm asking if there's anybody on, that have indicated that they wanna participate in this public hearing? Charlie? Okay. I will close this public hearing, and I'll open it for discussion by the council.
Mayor, is the, is the owner okay with the C4?
Yes, I checked with the developer, and he's okay with the C4, as long as what he's proposing would be allowed, and it is.
Okay.
Does he have any further plans later on to go into a light industrial program?
Not, not right now.
Because I know, I know that we, we talked about, you know, in the industrial part to be south of the Expressway, and this definitely fits the, the lot, you know?
Not right now. Right now, he's only proposing a warehouse, a warehouse for the steel recycling site. Currently, that's what he's proposing.
And he's, and the owner's...
Yes, he's aware of, of the, of what we are approving, and he is okay with that, as long as he's allowed to do what he wants.
And his plans will be fit into the C4?
Yes. Yes.
Anybody else from the council? Anybody else? I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve, to approve the, going from agriculture open in round to a C4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this, I open it for final discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and ordinance 4953 is approved five zero. I will call for 1.1Z. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item 1.1C is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for the club at Simron. It's a 1,200 South Sherwood Building A, B, and C. It's out of Block 8, out of Simron Country Club, Phase 1, Section 2. It's currently Zoned PUD. And the applicant is CC Operation LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located off of Sherwood Road, along the west side of Sherwood Road. Simron Country Club has been offering the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages since December of 1983. Since the club was recently sold and the use is not transferable to others, the applicant would like to obtain his own permit. The hours of operation would be every day from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and only when they have private events, they're proposing to be open till 2:00 a.m. Staff, they're proposing four to nine employees. Parking and landscaping are in compliance. For the sale of alcohol, code states that such uses need to be 300 feet from residential uses. There are some residences within the radius, thus a waiver of the separation requirement needs to be considered. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a two-year reevaluation, at which time he'll have to renew his CUP and TABC license, and waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is the public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Ms. Carrillo, I'm asking to see if anybody electronically has indicated that they wanna participate in this public hearing, and Charlie, verify, validate. So I will close this public hearing, and I'll bring it over to the councils for council review.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I have a question.
Good. I need a second first.
Second.
I need a second. We have a second, then I'll open it for discussion. Ms. Garza, you have the floor.
Is this for life of use?
We're recommending two years. Since it's a new applicant, well, it's up to you. You wanna, you can amend the, the recommendation for life of use.
What did they have? I mean, didn't they have a life of use?
They used to have a life of use, because it was a previous owner for, since 83.
Mayor, I would like to recommend that we give them a life of use, I think.
We can amend, we have no problem with that.
I need to ask for a second to be removed. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will.
Removed, and now you can remove your motion, sir, and reconvene the motion.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to approve the conditional use permit to be a life of use.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll open it for discussion. Any questions by any other council members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4954 is approved with the changes and the recommendations by, by Mr. Plata. And I will call for 1.1B, it's a public hearing.
1.1D is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at 1618 East 9th Street, being lots 18 to 23, Block 142, Mission Original Townsite. It's currently Zoned C3, and the applicant is Tomas Cantú. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Carlem Avenue and East 9th Street, along the north side of East 9th Street. The applicant proposes to construct a 24-by-14 building with a drive-through service window for his restaurant. He's proposing to sell grilled hamburgers, tacos, and tortas. Access to the drive-through window will be via 22-foot access off of 9th Street. The drive, the driveline will allow the stacking of at least three vehicles. The applicant is proposing to have a 50-by-14 canopy outdoor seating area. Hours of operation is Tuesday through Sunday from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., closed on Mondays. Staff would be three to four employees. The parking, for the parking, for the site is located along the west side of the building. It is noted that the site is located within the central business district, which is exempt from the parking code. Staff believes that this business would be an improvement to this area that has been vacant for several years now. Staff recommends approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation, to assess the new operation, and compliance with building fire, health codes, and the acquisition of a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody on electronic that wants to participate in the public hearing? Charlie? Therefore, I will close the public hearing, and I will move it over to the council for, for discussion. Council?
Going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this, I open it for final discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4955 is approved five oh. And I will call for 1.1E. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
1.1A is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Tinseltown Mission, located at 2516 East Expressway 83, being Lot 1, Tinseltown subdivision. It's currently Zoned Commercial. The applicant is CNMK Texas Properties LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Expressway 83 and Taylor Road. The applicant desires to renew the conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcohol for Tinseltown. No new use is proposed or change has been made at this location. The most recent approval for this site was on August 13, 2018, for a period of two years. The sale of alcohol only takes place from the main concession area. The hours of operation is every day from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. They have 59 employees. Parking, parking has been in compliance. For the sale of alcohol, the code states that such uses need to be 300 feet from residential uses. There are some residents within the radius. Santa Lucia Development, thus a waiver of the separation needs to be considered. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a two-year reevaluation, at which time the applicant will have to renew his CUP and TABC license, and the waiver of 300-foot separation from residential homes. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? Is there any electronic individuals wanting to participate, Ms. Carrillo, in public hearing? Carlos, thank you. And this, I close this public hearing, and I allow the council now to be able to discuss. Go ahead, council.
Would like, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this, I open it for final discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh, and ordinance 4956 is approved. Now, we'll call for 2.0, which is consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item, at any time during the meeting, when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. Therefore, we have consent agenda item 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, and 2.8. Is there any one item? Is there any one item that you, any of the council member wants to pull? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda item.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda item, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries consent item two point one, two point two, two point three, two point four, two point five, which includes ordinance forty-nine fifty-seven, two point six, two point seven, and two point eight are approved five-oh. And I will call for, for the section on the, on the agenda for three point zero approvals and authorization, and I will call for three point one, and Mr. Salinas, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Come before you seeking authorization to authorize staff to request for qualifications, to pre-qualify contractors on utility streets, drainage, water plants, wastewater plants, industrial pre-treatment plant and facilities emergencies. All qualification proposals will be referred to an evaluation committee appointed to review and evaluate on the basis of demonstrated competence, experience, bonding capacity, references, and qualifications to perform emergency repairs based on areas of specialization. The evaluation committee will be comprised of city engineer, purchasing director, public works director, finance director, deputy city manager, and two city council members. Staff recommendation, Mayor, City Council members for approval.
I want to include the two city council appointments will be Mr. Plata and Ms. Ortega. And this I open it for, for the councils. I'm ready to entertain a motion if a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh, and be advised that the appointment for the evaluation committee will be, will be for, for a year, and then we'll reconsider again, okay? Three point two, Mr. Salinas, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members, item three point two is authorize staff to request for qualifications for professional engineering services pool, in accordance with the Texas Professional Service Procurement Act. Again, all qualifications proposals will be referred to an evaluation committee appointed to review and evaluate on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the professional services based on areas of specialization. The evaluation committee will be comprised of city engineer, purchasing director, public works director, planning director, deputy city manager, and two city council members. Staff recommendation, approval.
What is the wishes of the council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three point two is approved, Mr. Salinas, at five-oh, and I'm calling for three point three, Mr. Salinas, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members, item three point three is the authorization to execute second and final year renewal option for sodium chloride for the North and South Water Turbine Plant. On October twenty eighteen, the city of Mission entered into contract with Evoqua Water Technologies for the purchase of sodium chloride for the North and South Water Turbine Plants. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options, based on four percent increase in price. For this renewal, Evoqua Water Technologies Inc. has opted to increase original price at four percent, as originally stipulated on the bid tabulation documents. Staff seeking authorization again to extend the contract for the second and final one-year renewal option with Evoqua Water Technologies. This agreement will extend bid number eighteen dash two ninety-one dash zero nine dash twenty-seven from October twenty twenty through September twenty twenty-one. Staff and city manager recommend approval, Mayor.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve three point three, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three point three is approved, Mr. Salinas, at five-oh.
Thank you.
Three point four, Ms. Luna, you have the floor, ma'am.
Mayor and council, item three point four is the authorization to execute a second one-year renewal option with T D L Properties LLC, O C L Enterprises LLC, and Conde Landscaping for Weedy Lot Abatement. On October fourteen, twenty nineteen, the city of Mission entered into a contractual agreement with T D L Properties LLC, O C L Properties LLC, and Conde Landscaping for Weedy Lot Abatement. The terms for this contract were for one year with two one-year renewal options. There will be no increase for the original proposal for O C L Enterprises and Conde's landscaping. T D L proposes will increase a two percent of their fees, staff and city manager recommended approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three point four is approved at five-oh, and we're calling for three point five. Chief Dominguez or Assistant Chief?
Yes, sir, I'll be filling in for Chief Dominguez, he's taking care of a family member. Mayor, City Council. This for approval of resolution authorizing the creation of the Rio Grande Valley Regional nine-one-one Emergency Communications District. Senate Bill eleven oh eight and House Bill thirty-four sixty-two permit council of governments, regional planning commissioners to establish regional emergency communication districts. By creating an emergency communications district, monies collected through fees on telephone bills will be remitted in their entirety to this district. Under the current standards, not all funds collected by the Texas Commission of State Emergency Communications gets allocated to the local council of governments. Emergency communication districts will be allowed, will allow for long-term planning and provide for reliable stream of revenue. So basically, if you look on your phone bill, you'll see fifty cents deducted every month. That goes up to Austin, we're not guaranteed a set amount of monies. By going to this agreement, all sixteen public safety access points will be allowed to get their fair share of funding.
I have one question, and maybe for Ms. Garcia. This funding that he's talking about is not the same funding the nine-one-one committee gets from the Rio Grande Valley Council of Governments? Or is it?
I don't think it's the same.
Is it or isn't it?
Yes, it's from the nine-one-one Emergency Communications District. But having this, we're not set, guaranteed a set amount of monies from the state. So by this, by forming this deal, we'll be able to, long-term planning, we'll be able to, you know, say, the X amount of dollars were brought in this year, we'll be able to plan the year after, the year after that, instead of hoping and wishing and waiting.
My question is, is it going to cut the nine-one-one funding for your organization? For the, for the deal, because I know when, when I started on the nine-one-one committee, the fees were given directly to the council, government, so they could be able to give, issue grants or whatever, or buy equipment and so forth, and I'm just, I'm just curious.
It won't cut into it, what it'll do is it'll just allow us to have future planning for how much money. We'll be able to kind of, well, not us, but the district by itself will be able to possibly guesstimate how much funding will be, instead of just hoping and praying, we'll get a certain dollar.
But would it be a new tax or an old tax, and they're not going to get any, any of the money of the tax?
From my understanding, it's the same thing, it's just now it'll be more guaranteed, the funding.
Mayor, and we did receive a letter from the L R G D V C requesting for support on this, this particular agenda.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to hear, whether the council was approved.
It'll fall under the cog.
I don't want to take any action from my standpoint, and I'm just talking about myself.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and cut the nine-one-one committee that, that we created since, since twenty-five years ago, you know, and build everything up, and then lose all the funding that you're gathering for, for future improvements and so forth as a result of it, but you're telling me that, that you received a, 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 a support letter?
Yes, sir, it's, it was a, a letter from the L R G D V C addressed to you, sir.
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, I mean, Ms. Ortega, you had a question, go ahead, you have the floor, ma'am.
No, I didn't have a question.
You did, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Vela, you okay? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number sixteen ninety for the record. And this I open it for discussion, final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries a four-oh, approval of resolution sixteen ninety. And I'm, I'm calling for three point six, Ms. Vela, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, item three point six is the approval of the August twenty twenty financials. Our beginning fund balance was nineteen million, three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and total revenues for the month were five million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and expenditures were eight million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of sixteen million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, forty-three dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second? We have a second, any discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and Ms. Ortega, are you casting your vote? An approval, so we have a five-oh for three point six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vela. Now, three point seven, Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item three point seven, a discussion, possible action on modifying COVID nineteen for the city of Mission guidelines. This is the opportunity for the Mayor and the Council to make modifications regarding COVID nineteen. We, we have received calls, Mayor, just Mayor and Council, regarding our upcoming holiday, which is Halloween. There was a, a discussion at the county level with the county judge regarding trick-or-treating throughout, throughout the cities, throughout the county. The county did mention that they were going to issue out an, an order from the county. However, it's not out as of now. That is a concern that we've been receiving. Again, we, here in the city, we're, we're planning not to have our city Halloween event. It was not recommended at the last meeting that we had with the county for these types of event to occur for safety and precautions.
For clarity, council, I would like to, for you to put it to a motion. The, the first one that I have is the Halloween trick-or-treat event, the normal Halloween trick-or-trick event, whether we want to allow it in Mission or not allow it in Mission. So I'll open it for discussion by the council.
Again, I, I personally, just on a personal level, I think that if our children are not in school yet, I think that as a city, we should think of everybody safe, and I'm sure that our city employees would like one night off to be with their family and not have an event. And I think because the medical, county medical doctor has advised against having anything, Mayor, I would like to see that we cancel all events for now, unless something else comes up within the next couple of weeks.
For the day? Do I, you want to put it in a formal motion, ma'am?
Well, I don't know if you want to ask everybody else's opinion.
My preference would be not to have the trick-or-treating allowed in the city. That would be my preference.
I don't mind putting it in a form of my motion to cancel all events.
Okay.
So.
Okay, we have a motion to, to cancel the Halloween trick-or-treating, the city, within the city mission, city limits, and I have a second.
Yes.
We have a second, and I'll give it a final discussion, because Ms. Ortega wanted to say something, go ahead, Ms. Ortega.
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay, anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five-oh. So the next one that I have, Mr. Perez for you, is, is opening the city parks. We need to determine whether we're ready to open the city parks, and if so, a hundred percent capacity, seventy-five percent capacity, fifty percent capacity, or twenty-five percent capacity. And I'm not talking about, about the walkability part, because that's already open, but, but because of health reasons and, and the medical professionals' request. But I'm talking about, you know, like the basketball courts and the rest for people to. So I would like the council to give us some direction on it, because I've been getting the phone calls.
So right now, kids can go play basketball and all of that at the parks?
So, so right now, you know, the, we, we do have a portion of the park that's, that's open, of course, our walking trails. We do have our tennis center that is open. One of the things that we don't have is the restroom facilities, and then on certain parks, and then also the playground equipment is, is still currently closed. That's what is currently not being utilized at this time.
And the basketball courts, you can't have more than ten in there. And there, you know, and, and like in the J C Park, I know, you know, that on a regular day, not being COVID, we would have fifty to sixty kids playing basketball there.
I guess my question also, Mayor, would be, Randy, do you know what our surrounding municipalities doing? Are their parks open, are they still closed?
Will that give the floor to Mr. Brett Benson to answer that question, if he's ready for it?
We've been having Zoom meetings with the local parks directors here in the valley. We've had two meetings already, we're going to have another one, because somebody wants to change something. But right now, all parks are closed, Mission is the only pool that's open to school. City of Bar has their pool open, only because they're, uh, pushing with, with the school district. So only the schools are using the swimming pool. I know they've been wanting to open it up, but they're still behind the opening. In the City of Bar, in the City of West Coast, wanted to do an adult, back, adult softball league, and that's been kind of temporarily turned down for right now.
How about, how about your special, what do you call it, pickleball?
Yeah, pickleball.
A good call for that one.
Oblick Park, sharing, they go out there and take the lines on the field, on, on courts, that they're playing pickleball in the mornings and the evenings.
So it's open, open for pickle, pickleball, but in the, at Oblick Park?
Only at Oblick Park, nothing's happening.
Which is outside in the open.
Yes, and they're, they've got four courts out there, their numbers are about twelve. They're probably spread out better for the technical.
Yeah.
The hiking bike trail is open, we do have, like, Mr. Perez had mentioned, we do have various, we've got four restrooms that are open, and we'll be talking about that at our parks board meeting, to see if we're going to go ahead and go forward, open up more restrooms. And I know with the voting going on over Banner's Park, we'll be opening that restroom full-time. But we've been opening the restrooms from seven in the morning till ten in the evening. We start in the morning till ten, at that time, we sanitize, we close them up, and then we open them again. At four in the afternoon, we close them ten to nine, and at that time, we sanitize them again. Possibilities, we get the same phone calls, you know?
That's good.
You probably get more than I do, but yes, we do, we see the phone calls, and it was concerning.
Yeah.
But people are taking it this way, they're very understanding.
I want to thank you for keeping those restrooms clean. I've been walking in several of the parks, and they pretty clean. I think that's, especially right now, they need to be maintained like that. Mayor, and I'm like Jessica and the rest of the, I think maybe we should just finish the year, I mean, with the parks closed, I mean, I just.
Can you, can, can, I guess if, if Ms. Vela and Ms. Garcia are okay, put a form of motion that our parks will remain the same from now till November the first, so the, so we can let the public know, and everybody will have a clear, a clear vision, you know, of, an expectation of it. So, so, so that, that'll calm down the people, and they already plan, they can plan accordingly for it, you know, so, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I will entertain your motion, Mr. Plata.
Second.
And we have a second. And this I open it for discussion, for any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. A motion carries. And I have one more, Mr. Perez, and it's, it has to do the opening of gymnasiums to include the, the rental part of the gymnasiums that we used to have before. Where are we with that, at what level, and, and do we want to maintain it the same, or increase, or decrease, you know, for the council to?
Yes, currently, right now, all gymnasiums are closed for public use or for any kind of rentals. We are not renting any facilities at this time, due to the safety concern.
Council, you want to continue the same thing, or?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue to keep them closed.
Till what time? Till we can be cleared?
Visit again.
Till November the first, or the next city council meeting?
No, so the same, keeping it the same as what you had said in the previous agenda.
November, November first? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second, and this I. We have a first and a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0, Mr. Perez, and they'll give you the guidance and direction, and it'll give the public the guidance and direction where we're headed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Unless there's any other item here on this, on this agenda item?
That's it.
Then, then we'll call for 3.8, and Ms. Bilmades, Mr. Bilmades, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item 3.8, seeking approval to award contract to GBA Consulting Engineers, Inc., DBA NV5 Energy Efficiency Services for Independent Third-Party Engineering Comprehensive Review of an Energy Savings Performance Contract. Staff received two proposals for the review of an Energy Savings Performance Contract from GBA Consulting Engineers, DBA NV5, and Ethos Alistic Holdings LLC. Ethos Alistic Holdings LLC retracted their proposal after reviewing the Energy Savings Performance Contract and the investment-grade audit and other materials due to lack of experience in water meters and sewer manholes, of which is a large fraction of the project. The committee agreed to move forward with GB, JBA Consulting Engineers, Inc., DBA NV5 Energy Saving Services. They will provide the City of Mission with owner's representative services for third-party oversight of the Energy Savings Performance Contract. As a city owner's representative, under SC Project, JBA Consulting Engineers, NV5 Energy Saving Services will provide the scope task identified in the attached cost proposal under Phase 3, which includes a project development, walkthroughs, meetings, review, IGA report, and city council support and presentation of findings for a cost of $28,000 and optional services on hourly rate on as-needed basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Council?
So do you all highly recommend this third party?
Yes, Mr. Plata. They came in with a very detailed cost proposal on what their review will entail in terms of determining the savings overall.
How much did you all had in the contract for the third-party engineer?
We actually had budgeted about ten, between ten and $20,000. You know, we, in terms of the overview, what they're going to be presenting to us, the cost seems fair and reasonable in doing the research that we've done to do comparison.
Can you just, Mr. Gus, can you just make sure they send the independence letter from the two entities? I think it's very important to have that in the file.
Go ahead, ma'am.
We discuss now or are we going to do, wait for a motion?
I will.
Because I'm, I'm fine either way.
I will wait for the motion.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Ms. Garcia, you have the floor.
Okay. I, on item number thirteen, on the limitation of liability. I, can you, somebody go to that? I'm not, and I just see the number $50,000 for liability, and I'm wondering if, is that sufficient or, and I'm just being over-cautious.
Is this in regards to the terms and conditions that we have in the solicitation?
Uh, well, it's on, it's on number thirteen.
Page 162.
On the, in their cost proposal?
Yes.
Limitation of liability.
Yes. I mean, that's, you know, that's not even auto liability. So. Well, that would be better than 50, is what I thought. And then I have another, number 22. There's the, there's, there's another item that says that they can, that they'll be able to ask for other surveys and other, other, which I thought that's what they were doing, reviewing things.
Yes. And at what, at whose cost? You're talking about additional surveys and additional, additional activities that are not that they?
That were not provided as part of the scope, yes. They do reserve the right to request as much information as possible to make, to have a clear understanding of the project's scope.
And, and the, are they going to pay for it or are we going to pay for it or?
This information would have to come from PSI because there wasn't generated the engineering on, on the assessment that was done and the investment-grade audit that was done.
Okay.
So then, so then it wouldn't be at our expense? No? Okay. Well, can we make that clear? Because it wasn't clear in the, in the, in the paragraph.
We'll make sure that we address that with NV5.
Okay, and then there's a, there's another one. I just want to be clear, there is a provision that allows termination of the contract within seven, I mean, giving seven days' notice, is that correct?
Termination of this contract?
Yeah, I would imagine, yes.
Number fifteen.
That's number fifteen.
Yes, the clause is there, but we have our own termination clauses in our procurement regulations that we reserve the right to terminate as well.
Okay.
And how many days do we need to notify? Is it seven or thirty or, normally thirty, you know?
It's upon the findings, if we determine that we have the right to terminate at our convenience, we would properly notify them.
Okay, well, maybe you could just make that, that paragraph not contradict ours.
Not a problem.
Mayor, moving forward with these type of line items, I would have liked to have seen like a workshop of something so that all our questions could be answered and maybe meet these people. Would have been nice if they were here so that they could answer our questions just in the future with anything like dealing with such a huge project like this. Because I too have questions, but going along with what Ms. Norrie was asking, I hope Gus reviews it and makes sure that there's no liability to the city.
We actually have Mr. Chris helping with NV5 online. He's connected on there.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, everybody. Chris helping here.
Go ahead, sir. Be prepared, Ms. Ortega has some questions. Go ahead.
Sure.
So you've met with our staff in reference to this project, sir?
Yeah, over the phone.
Okay, can you briefly, can you briefly give us your, your thoughts of how this project would be for the City of Mission?
Sure, I think it's a very positive type of project. We do oversight on these types of projects all over the country. We're doing this for the City of Phoenix, the City of Boston. We've done this at Air Force bases, Joint Base San Antonio there in Texas, Bureau of Prisons in Texas, in Midland, and others, helping cities, towns, and school districts improve their infrastructure and, and basically attack their deferred maintenance backlog by using this pretty progressive design-build program called Energy Savings Performance Contracting. We act as your owner's representative to make sure that the energy services companies, like in this case PSI, is treating the city fairly as far as scope of work, the type of technologies they're going to install, and the price and the manner at which everything is going to be designed, installed, commissioned, and accepted. So basically, you're quality assurance agent throughout the whole process from beginning to end.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions by any of the council members?
There was one more, and I.
Go ahead.
I, I see that, that, you know, this company's out of Connecticut, which that's not a problem, but it does say in the contract here that, that this contract would be, basically, if there's any issues, we would be bound by the laws in Connecticut and not in Texas. So I would want that to be changed to the Texas law.
We're going to change that to Idalgo, Idalgo County.
Just like all our contracts, Idalgo County, Texas.
Right, we have no problem with that. This is our standard terms and conditions. Other terms and conditions that the city puts forward would supersede.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question then, Mr. Plata.
So all of the required and needed information from there is going to come from the city, right? Directly from us to them?
That is correct. Mr. Plata, I've provided them with all the information that PSI has provided to me to include the investment-grade audit, the project's scope, anything and everything that they provided to me, I've provided to them. That's how they were able to develop their cost proposal.
So they have any questions or concerns that will come to us?
That is correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
They work for, for us, they will be in contact with us, they will be giving us constant reports, updates as they progress with their analysis and studies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any final questions? I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I did not hear a, and nay. Therefore, I'm going to rule that 3.8 is approved, 5-0, unless somebody steps up and tells me different. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Bilmades.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
3.9, Mr. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item number 3.9, which is authorization to apply for local parks, urban outdoor recreation grant with Texas Parks and Recreation Department. This is a $1.5 million grant with 50/50 match. Purpose of this grant is for park improvements for Lyons Park. The estimated cost of our match would be $750,000. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
Want to approve? We have a motion to approve in a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Benson, 5-0, and I'm calling for 3.10, Mr. Flores.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.10 is to authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement for 70 golf carts, two carryalls, and one driving range carryall via Omni Partners contract EV2671-01 for the Sherman Castle Golf Course. Our current lease expires on December 2020, December 7, 2020. The advisory board recommends approval. Staff and city manager also recommend approval.
Come in.
Is there the will of the council?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve 3.10. When we have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Flores, 3.10 is approved, 5-0, Mr. Flores. 3.11, Chief Dominguez, or his designate?
Mayor and Council, 3.11 is authorization to enter into a no-fault extended hardware warranty coverage for 175 Vista body-worn camera devices via watch guard sole-source vendor. The City of Mission police department deployed 175 watch guard body camera systems who are sworn personnel over two years ago. It's imperative that we enter into a no-fault extended hardware warranty coverage in order to replace any body cameras that have become inoperable. The total cost of entrance warranty coverage is $19,687.50.
Mayor, move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve 3.11, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.11 is approved, and call for 3.12. Benson, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, this is item 3.12 is for the approval of change order number one for the construction of pre-engineered metal building at Birdwell Park. The first recommended change is found in the eve of the pavilion for the strength, design, and durability as pre-engineer. Will yield a $1,000 decrease in cost. Second recommended change is for a galvanized coating of all structural steel and an increased cost of $9,400. Together, there will be combined cost increase of $8,400. These changes will yield an increase in construction costs from $112,894.40 to $121,294.40. Staff and city manager recommend approval of change order number one.
Move to approve, Mayor. We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.12 is approved at 5-0, Mr. Benson. 3.13, Ela Sardé?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Agenda item 3.13 is requesting the authorization to enter into a inter-local agreement between the City of Mission and the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council and the RGV MPO regarding the implementation of the RGV Bicycle Pedestrian Counter Data Program. The City of Mission Hike and Bike Trail has been selected to participate in the first phase of the regional bicycle pedestrian counter project due to its access to schools, local businesses, dense neighborhoods of low socioeconomic profiles and connections to other recreation options. In an effort to help improve trail and sidewalk networks, the City of Mission agrees to participate in the installation of bicycle pedestrian counters and software at its hike and bike trail for data collection of trail users. The participation of this program will be at no cost to the City of Mission and only requires the designated point of contact for their data collection efforts. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I'm going to approve. We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second question, who's the point of contact?
We have designated Brett Benson, which is our Parks and Rec Director, just because it's going to be for operational purposes.
Not a problem. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.13 is approved, 3.14, Mr. Cardoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.14 is the approval of Resolution 4959 of the City Council of the City of Mission, adopted in State of Texas Executive Order GA 32 relating to the continued response to COVID-19 disaster as Texas reopens. I know there's some long bullet points, I want to bring you the important ones that will impact our city. Every business establishment in Texas shall operate at no more than 75% of the total listed occupancy of the establishment. There is no occupancy limit for the following listed those under the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, CISA 4.0, except as provided, there is no occupancy limit for outdoor areas, events, or establishments with the exception of the following: outdoor area events or establishments that may operate at no more than 75 or 50%, as applicable of the normal operating limits of determined by the owner, which would include our swimming pools, museums, libraries, similar facilities, water parks, et cetera. For any outdoor gathering in excess of 10 people, the mayor of the city in which the gathering is held approves the gathering. Restaurants that have less than 51% of their grocery receipts from the sale of alcohol beverages and those customers eat or drink may offer dining services up to the 75%. Bars or similar establishments that hold a permit from TABC and are not restaurants may offer on-premises services. A bar or similar establishment may offer services up to 50% of the total listed occupancy of their establishment. And the county judge or the county in which a bar or similar establishment is located files the requisite form with TABC. People over the age of 65 are strongly encouraged to stay at home as much as possible. People may visit nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living facilities, and long-term care facilities as determined through Health and Human Services Commission. All indoor and outdoor professional collegiate and similar sporting events shall remain limited to 50% of the normal operating limits as determined by the owner, football games, soccer games, et cetera. And this executive order does not supersede the executive order GA 10, 13, 17, 24, 25, 29, which we call the mask order, and GA 31. And we are seeking city council and guidance.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion, do we, we have a second, and this is open for discussion. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Has to do with the bars. According to this, the, the bars are, can get up to 50% capacity?
That is correct. I spoke to Idalgo County, and under the here, it states that the county judge of the county in which the bars or similar settlements is located files the requisite form with TABC. I went ahead and I put a call to TABC. I wanted to see what the prerequisite form that they needed to file. Their response to me was, we don't have it yet.
So, so the order that the, that the county judge has gave us Friday indirectly that the bars are going to be closed, doesn't apply?
So I went on and I had a. So I went on and I had a phone call today with legal counsel and we approached the...
Let's talk, Mr. Martinez, just a question.
This is the governor's order.
Okay. But what is the current county judge's position for the bars?
If we haven't ruled restrictive yet, I think they might, but we'll wait on that. But this is the governor's order.
So the directive that he gave us on Friday over doesn't apply then?
Is it about closing the bars? Well, the city can adopt it if we want to. This is more restrictive. It doesn't rely on the governor's order. So it does apply. Now, the city can adopt it or not for the governor's order.
I'm going to ask Mr. Pettis to give us a report. Mr. Pettis, go ahead and report on what you...
Yes, sir. So James, incorrect me if I'm wrong. The governor's order does specify that the county judge has that, the decision on the bars being open. That was something that was discussed at the meeting on Friday. However, like I mentioned earlier, the county judge has not issued an actual order regarding the bar component being reopening, but it is up to the discretion of the county judge as per the governor's order.
So what are we going to do tomorrow? Or what have we got tonight on bars? What is the direction that we give our staff?
So Mayor, according to the governor's order, the bars will not be able to open that are 51% and greater till after October 14. And as of coming here, we did check the latest press release and order from the county judge on their website, and I put a phone call in as well. We do not have an order yet from the county judge.
Back to the question that I asked. What are we going to have tonight?
They're closed.
Tonight at 11:00.
They're closed. They're closed. Bars are closed. Yes, sir.
That's what I want to hear. And I want everybody to hear from, that are watching, all the individuals that are watching, that there's no confusion because they're trying to conduct that we're opening because of confusion. There's no confusion.
That is correct.
Either we open or we close. And when we close, with conditions, we know what the conditions are. We want to make that clear to the community, you know, as far as that is concerned.
That is correct. And Mayor, good point. Yes, you are correct. I want them to know that the bars will continue to be closed unless the county judge files that form with TABC for the county.
And I also want to correct, I have resolution number 1691. Ms. Carrillo, which one is it? 1691 or the one?
Resolution.
Resolution 1691.
1691. Thank you, Mayor.
If it gets approved, it'll be resolution 1691. I just want to make sure that we keep our records straight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Your vote, your motion to approve the governor's order, but not the bar component, that's going to be definitely wouldn't be counted.
We're going to approve what is here. And what is here says that, that we're approving the governor's orders, but it does have the, as soon as the county judge gives his ruling, that whatever he rules is what we're going to live with. Unless the council wants different, you know, the council wants different, so this is a time to make the changes, you know. But I figured that if we align ourselves with the county judge, and if the county judge aligns with the governor, and we all three entities, government entities align ourselves, then we'll reduce confusion for the public of Texas, for the citizens of Texas. That's my take.
So would a motion be to accept these?
We already have a motion. We have a motion already on the table, the second to accept this as presented. Am I correct?
But what if the county judge tomorrow signs another different order that would conflict this?
We probably would have to have to, if we were going to do anything different than what we're doing today, we probably would have to call a special meeting and approve the counties.
The governor is not going to reopen, but he may end up seeing county to make that final decision. So if county makes it to stay closed, we probably should come back about their resolution for that order.
And we couldn't approve subject to the...
That's what I'm getting at. Do you want to approve the governor's order subject to adoption of county's order?
And I don't want to approve anything that I don't have concrete stuff that, and because, because if we approve it according to, and then he approves something else that we don't like, I'd rather call a special meeting, emergency meeting, and go from there if we don't like what the county judge.
I agree, Mayor. We have the county order.
Yeah.
So can we wait?
But we have the bar components waiting for the county judge.
Yes.
Mayor, for, we have a, we have a meeting on Wednesday and Thursday. So could we do a just-in-case agenda for Thursday?
Have we posted already?
We've...
Yeah, we can do the two-hour, the two-hour meeting, the two-hour posting.
Sir, if I may also...
Now it's one hour. Now it's one hour posting.
Okay.
Yes, we can definitely call a meeting. However, in previous county orders that we've adopted, we've also included the language that we will adopt any subsequent orders that do come up. And so we have that language in there.
But that's not here.
No, sir. It's not because they didn't issue one. And so I'm assuming that they're, they will meet tomorrow, and at that point, they would issue one before the 14th as it's stated in the governor's order.
And I would rather see the order, you know, because if we're going to do things different, I don't want, I don't want to accept something I haven't seen, you know, that maybe, I don't know. That's me, you know. I like to, like, right here, I already know what the governor has.
And just so the council understands, the reason the governor allows the bars to open is if your region under the service health area is below the 50% hospitalization, he's allowing those county judges to make that. So if our area, our county would have been above, or our service area would have been above the 15%, then that would not have been an option, kind of like what he did last time that didn't apply to us. So this is one of those that, because our numbers are down, he's given that option, but he's returning that power back to the county.
Well, I don't want anybody to misunderstand and think that they can open.
Well, I think we made it very clear, the bars can't open in Mission, as of today and as until further notice, you know. That's a clear message right now, you know. Unless they have 51% of food, a food that...
Less than 51% of their sales.
Different category. But if they're fully just bars, they're, right now, no open until further notice. And if the judge just says, yes, they can open, you know, because I know there's some cities that are petitioning the judge to make, to open the bars, you know. And if he says they're going to open, then I'll call the special meeting, and we post, and we can post 30 minutes before Wednesday or Thursday and take care of business, you know. But I don't, I wouldn't want to put provisions to this that pending not knowing what we're going to approve, you know. It's kind of like a carte blanche to the county judge, you know, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that.
And can we just hold off on both and listen to them on Wednesday or Thursday?
This is already executive order. It's already in place by the, by the governor. The governor.
Okay.
And since we, we've been very consistent about doing it during city council meetings, you know, and, and again, you know, next city council meeting, if something changes, because keep in mind, COVID-19 has been, the only thing constant with COVID-19 has been changed, you know. That's the only constant that we've had, you know. Other than that, and I don't expect it to change the consistency, you know. So, so, so we can move forward unless, I mean, you all, I mean, you don't want action, if you don't want action, then the council has to take a second and take the motion off?
We already motioned. I think we just need a vote.
Yes.
Well, he can present it again when we meet on Wednesday or Thursday, no?
Well, I'm going to call for the vote, okay? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. I didn't hear any nays, so motion, this motion approved, 5.0.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it be resolution 1691.
1691, thank you.
Yes. On item 3.5, 3.15, I will recommend that we take no action. Mr. Pettis, thank you. We'll just take no action, and because we're taking no action, nothing else is needed as far as that is concerned, okay?
Thank you.
So, and I'm calling for 3.16, approval to proceed. Chief Dominguez.
Mayor?
Yes.
I thought we were changing the location.
And when we do, when we make a decision, we'll put it on the agenda, you know. But right now, there's only one item that is there, you know, and we've already said that we're not going to do that, so I'm taking no action.
Okay.
3.16?
I'm not understanding, but it's okay.
You recommend that December?
If I'm...
You know, and another, you know, until we get it, you understand?
I was just joking about that.
You know?
If I may, Mayor, I can...
Of course, just joking.
On that item?
I mean, I'd like to hear his presentation.
Well, and the, you know...
Stand corrected, and from calling you, go ahead and take a chair, and then Mr. Pettis come back, and I will entertain 3.15. Mr. Pettis, you have the, you have the floor.
Sir, I just wanted to clarify on this. We're taking no action because we, the way it was posted, we are not going to move forward with this particular item. However, we will be planning a workshop at a later date, once we coordinate that date with the rest, with the whole council to make sure that everyone is available. We are looking at tentative dates. I know that there's a tentative date for next week, for the 22nd. I believe there was, mostly everyone had a consensus, and so we'll, I'll get confirmation from, from everyone, and at that point, schedule that for next week. However, we're taking no action on this because that's how it was posted, because we're not moving forward with this particular item.
Well, if the date is for the 22nd and we have to have this on a, on a regular meeting, or it has to be posted?
Yes, ma'am. We would, we would post, whether it's a workshop or a special meeting, we would post 72 hours prior to, to...
But my question is, does it have to be on an agenda previously?
Not necessarily.
The reason?
No.
Because it is here, right?
Yes.
It's on our agenda today to discuss that.
Yeah, so, so the item on the agenda was to actually request approval for a retreat. However, we're not moving forward with this particular location, the way it's presented at the agenda. And so therefore, we can definitely schedule a meeting or workshop at any time and with the proper posting as soon as we get consensus from everyone.
I think for the special meeting that we're having on Wednesday, we all had already agreed there was the 22nd, and the retreat was going to be somewhere here in Mission, which we already discussed with you. So I'd like to see within this week that agenda so that we could meet there on the 22nd.
Well, let me, let me, let me poll each one of you, okay? So for clarity, because I just found out something different. Are we, are you okay for October 22nd at the Bryan House?
Yes.
Are you okay for October 22nd at the Bryan House?
That's a Thursday?
The Thursday.
No, I cannot on the Thursday.
So now, now, are you okay for October 22nd at the Bryan House?
I'm okay.
Are you okay for October 22nd? And I'm okay on October 22nd, but Mr. Plata, not so.
Are you okay on the 21st?
I'm okay on the 21st.
How about, can we do the 21st?
Let's start, are you okay with the 21st at the Bryan House? Are you okay with the 21st? Are you okay, 21st? Now, Mr. Gus Martinez, the legal, the legal, I'm going to be asking your guidance, okay? Can we approve 3.15 and change the site?
Yeah, you can modify the site.
Okay. That's all I wanted to hear. Now I'll hear, I'll entertain a motion of 3.15.
Sir, sir, from me?
Hold on, one more thing. Go ahead.
We do have a scheduled city council workshop at 3:30 for Lyons Park on the 21st already. That was previously...
And it was already posted?
No, sir, not, that, that has not been posted. However, it was just prior arranged with the architect.
Yes, well...
Let's move him to the 20th then.
Moving forward or backwards?
Check when he's available within that week.
We can't, he can't do it at 22nd.
Oh, okay.
But can you do the 23rd?
What time?
Can...
I can do it at 3:30, on the 23rd, yes.
Okay. We'll move, we'll move the Wednesday meeting to October 23rd and do the retreat on October 22nd, which is, which is a Wednesday, right?
No, Ruben, we can't do the 22nd.
No, it would be the 21st.
I can do it on Wednesday. I cannot do it Thursday.
And, and we start at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, because remember, I told you that I have an 8:30, 8:30...
So then...
So there will be the 21st.
The 22nd.
Yes.
But you can be on the 22nd as long as it's after 3:30.
Yes.
So the meeting with the architect will be on the 22nd after 3:30.
Right.
At 3:30.
That's where Mr. Plata can go.
At 3:30.
But the retreat's on the 21st.
First.
But as you have it...
At 10:00 a.m.
Yes, sir.
At the Bryan House.
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
May I like to make a motion to have our retreat on October 22nd at the Bryan House?
21st.
Oh, sorry, 21st, sorry, Wednesday, 21st, at 10:00 a.m.
You're putting into a formal motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. In this, I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5.0 and 3.415, Mr. Pettis.
Thank you.
So set up the retreat.
October 21st at 10, right?
And let everybody all, do all the public notices that are required by law. Now I'll call for 3.16.
Yes, this is for approval to proceed with repairs of the Mission Police 2017 Ford F-250. Vehicles involved in an accident, 9/17 of 2020, to which we were not at fault. This vehicle is an integral vehicle needed for moving our SkyWatch towers, our trailers, and it's heavily utilized by our community-oriented policing unit. Bids were attained for damages, and the lowest bid was at $10,410.52 by J&amp;D Collision.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm on.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll open it for discussion, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What year is this Ford F-250?
2017.
2017?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is it in good shape?
Very good. Well, it was.
Well, it was in very good shape.
It's in very good shape, and it's a much-needed vehicle, and it's still going to lock.
You're going to replace it, I mean, you're going to repair it 20 years?
We're going to repair it, and it still has many years.
I was thinking about, about, you know, just taking that money and buying a brand-new vehicle.
Those trucks heavy duty.
Same size, Ford F-250, you know, and giving you more...
Well, it's got a lot of years.
It's useful, the sky...
It's not too bad miles. It's got a lot of years on. It's a heavy-duty tow.
That takes my... You answered my question.
Okay.
Can be me. Okay, I'll put it for discussion.
It's kind of in the same lines. How many miles does it have?
That I don't have, but it's not, it's, all it's used is to tow, you know, our SkyWatch towers to various parking lots and our utility trailers.
Okay, and this was not at fault, so obviously was somebody else's fault?
Correct. They turned out in front of us and caused us to collide with it.
And they didn't have insurance?
No, ma'am.
Obviously, okay. And we don't have full coverage or collision insurance on it?
We do have, that I'm not aware of. No, we should, we have insurance on it, but it'll, I believe it'll be reimbursed by...
Yes, ma'am. We do, we do run it through our insurance, and we do get a reimbursed a payment based on the amount of damage.
Which is this amount that's listed here?
The repairs is $10,004. It could vary, it could be, it's around that same amount. I don't have that amount with me.
Okay, so then we're covered...
But we do run it through our insurance.
We're covered by our insurance.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And wouldn't the insurance just pay them directly?
No, they, what they do is they, they send us a check for the amount of damages, and then we turn around and pay the vendor.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good luck. 4.0 unfinished business, I have none on the agenda. I don't want to double-check with Ms. Carrillo. You have nothing on, Mr. Pettis, we have nothing under unfinished business. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll call for 5.0, routine matters. 5.1, Mr. Pettis, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Again, just want to emphasize the importance of the census. We are, we do have events throughout the rest of the month to be able to accomplish that, so we can get everyone counted. Also, I do want to mention to the council that we, due to the, the safety and, safety concern, and of course, CDC guidelines and so forth, we're still, we're planning a virtual veterans parade. One of the things that, that we're, it's basically a barbecue for honoring our One of the things that, that we're, it's basically a barbecue for honoring our veterans and we will be setting up at the Mission Event Center. It will be a drive-through virtual parade where veterans are out aligned down the boulevard. We will be decorating the boulevard. We are providing a, a barbecue plate for each of the veterans. And then also, we did partner with the schools to do a project for, for the children to decorate or do posters, so we can decorate the cars for the veterans. So we partnered up with them as well to do that. Along with that, we, because of the safety concern as well, we, we're not gonna have a, a veterans golf tournament. However, we are gonna offer a free round of golf throughout the month of November for the veterans that, that do, can go play on their, on their own time. That's something that we're continuing, continuing to, to plan for the veterans parade, veterans weekend activity. Also, speaking of veterans, we do, we did take on the city of Mission, the operations of the Veteran State Cemetery, starting October. And we did bring on board Mr. James Moore, who is a new director for the Veterans Cemetery, who is currently on, so you all can.
Mr. Moore, please identify yourself, sir, so for the public and for the rest of the city employees, sir.
Yes, sir, James Moore here, Director of the Veteran Cemetery, glad to be with the city. Welcome.
Hello.
Welcome, go ahead, let's go.
No, I'm just saying hello.
So, so James Moore, it was currently the Director for the Veteran Cemetery and, and came on board with the city of Mission full time. He is very, very knowledgeable in the operations of the Veteran Cemetery and glad to have him on board. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. As far as the mayor, five point two, mayor's comment, I wanna echo Mr. Perez's remarks on, on the census twenty twenty. I'm asking the, the, the citizens out there, the, the ones that are, what is it? The, the ones that have not completed their census twenty twenty, to come out, please step, stepped up to the plate, assist our cities and the county with. By, by, it's a very simple process, the process, you can do it by phone or you can do it by, by computer or like, like we said at the previous report, we're gonna have it post the number there, give it a call and we'll send somebody out there to, to, to be able to, to, to do the, or attend one of our sessions that we have scheduled in the, from now till the end of the month, you know? So please do that and, and, and that's, that's it for me and I'll call for, for five point three and I'll start with Mr. Vela on the left, Mr. Vela?
No comments today.
Mr. Vela has no comment, Mr. Garcia?
I have none either, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Plata?
Yes, I also wanna, para, lo voy a decir en español, queremos animar a todos nuestros ciudadanos que por favor participen en el census, es algo muy importante, es extremadamente importancia, que todos seamos contados, esto nos ayuda para recaudar fondos en nuestra comunidad. Creo que en lo que sé no tienen que exponer nada sobre su estatus migratorio. Si tienen hijos en la universidad o fuera, anímelos, esto es muy importante, gracias.
Ms. Ortega?
Yes, tomorrow is early voting and so I ask everybody to please vote early because your vote is your choice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, you're welcome. I'll go to six point oh executive session pursuant to the BTCA Government Code, section fifty-five point zero zero one. I can entertain the motion.
I'm all.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and we are, we're gonna move into executive session and we'll let you know when we come out.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have reconvened.
Mayor on 6.1A. Counsel is ready.
Let me... Ms. Carrillo, you ready, Ms. Carrillo?
I am ready.
Okay. Calling for 6.1A?
Yes, sir. 6.1A. We require a motion... A motion to obtain or retain legal counsel for Taylor Road Phase 1 and 2 as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion?
Sec. I will move.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. 6.2A, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir. If it pleases this council, 6.2A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I all have the same motion. It's a motion to obtain, or rather acquire, land as discussed in executive session without necessary surveys and appraisals.
I will move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and this will also approve Resolution 1692, 1693, 1694, and 1695 for the record. Okay? So I will call for 6.3 Personnel Matters.
There is no action taken on this item, Mayor.
No action is taken, therefore I'll call for 7.0. Do I hear a motion to...